The city council meeting is called to order. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, everyone please remain standing. We have a guest pastor that's gonna come give us a prayer today.
What's his name? Chaplin Marshall. I'm here on behalf of Pastor Mitzi Pearson. I'm Chaplin Marshall.
Chaplin Marshall, nice to meet you.
Yes. All right. Just eternal God our Father, we thank you today for your love, your kindness, your grace and mercy. Father, you said all souls are mine. And let all souls be subject to the power, the higher power, for the powers that be are ordained of God. I pray for this great city. I pray for the mayor. I pray for the council and his staff. I pray for your officers that execute righteousness. I pray for the citizens of this city and every member in particular, Father God, that you would execute justice today. Give peace today in favor to all citizens, equality and justice. Lord, we know that you said in the last days that because iniquity shall abound, the love of many shall wax cold. I pray for the love of God to be prevalent in our meeting today with compassion, mercy, kindness, in the name of Jesus Christ. Bless the mayor, bless the city, bless the officers, bless your people with justice, mercy, love and kindness and unity. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please don't sit yet. I want to take a moment of silence. Abe Henderson, who's with the refirkation committee, lost his microphone at the weekend. Let's give him a moment of silence. Thank you.
Hi, thank you.
Vocal.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Present.
Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Yeah.
Mayor Paul Tim Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have seven present tonight and we do have a call.
Everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Anything we need to add, take off?
Do we have? He said no.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Support with the correction.
Okay. A new correction or a one?
The correction with the state.
Oh, corrections.
Yeah, from.
All right, so probably move to support it, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Okay, elected officials, Mary McLendon, come on up. She has good news for us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mary McLendon from the office of Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson, and I bring all of you greetings from his office. It's always a pleasure to be here in the fine city of Inkster. To you, mayor, all the council persons and all the dignitaries and officials here today, we bid you greetings. I just want to give you an update. We are currently working on the 2018-19 budget, and it's hoped that we'll have a great budget for all of the citizens of Wayne County and that you will be able to look at that budget and say, "We have a great budget for the year." Commissioner Anderson is a part of the Ways and Means Committee, so he certainly will be working very, very hard deliberating and making sure that all things are good for the citizens of Wayne County. Also, you know, I think you all know by now, we will have a justice center. Those contracts and all the documents have been looked at and they have been agreed to and approved by the commission. So we will have a criminal justice center as well as our justice system will be in place. You will have a jail and you will have a youth home as well. So all those things will be happening and of course the areas I-75 and Warren. So that criminal justice system is on its way. That agreement was made with Rock Venture, Mr. Uh, 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 uh.
Dan Gilbert.
Dan Gilbert, okay, and Rock Venture. Okay, that agreement has been made and it's on its way, so nobody's gonna get away with anything. You'll have a place to go and be adjudicated. And if you need to be detained, you will be detained as well, okay? So I just want you to know it's on its way. I also want to share with you, hold on one second. Excuse me, I have the park schedule with me and there's so many activities in the parks. And I wanna make sure that you all have your park schedule because it's a long, hot summer, as you can see, and the parks are just a good place to be. And so I do have park schedules with me. If you need a copy of it, you're more than welcome to get one from me. But I know that young people don't wanna hear this, but I do have some back-to-school information. They just got out. So I know they don't wanna hear this, but parents, you need to hear it. So please take note. On August the 9th, there's a Fun Fest and it's all completely free. And you will have your hearing and vision testing, dental screening, lead testing, child ID kits, healthy refreshments. It'll be haircuts, school supplies, immunizations, physicals, raffles, you name it. And it's for those from zero to 18 years old. So parents, you can't get yours done, but your children, they certainly can get theirs done. And it's all free. So please put that down, August the 9th, from 10:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. And of course, as I said, 33030 Van Born Road, and that's in the city of Wayne. That's the corner of Van Born and Vinoy. If you have, if you need additional information, you can contact 734-467-3381. And I think you all know that the coffee hours have been suspended for now for the summer because nobody wants to drink coffee as hot as it is right now. So it will resume on September the 10th and you're all welcome to attend. Thank you and it's a pleasure to be here.
State Representative Joel Jones, you have anything for us?
Good evening, mayor, council, city administration, citizens. Happy to be here. Lost the voice over the weekend.
You just lost the mic.
Happy to be back. Like I told you, a couple of weeks ago, I had left for DC and Canada, go and do a few things. So I made it back in town Friday. Things been going great. Many of you know we not in session over the next couple of months, so we'll be back in the district. So feel free to always give us a call. Number's still the same, 313-444-4095. And also, we're having our senior luncheon next Monday, July 9th, at the Rams Horn, right in Dearborn Heights at Inkster and Ford Road. Also, for any senior citizens or people that might think they're senior citizens that wanna come out for a free meal, feel free to come out. All is welcome. So that's all I have. Any questions or anything?
Yeah, where's the last time?
Yes, huh? I'll get you one. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Jerome, we're gonna go to the presentations now. Jerome Bivens, gonna do a presentation on the trash removal transition.
Good evening, mayor, council, department heads, viewing, audit, audience. I'm up here today to do a couple of house cleaning chores and make some statements. Today, we began a new contract with GFL. They started picking up the trash today, so we're excited about that. Just a few things I want citizens to be mindful of. Some of you guys still have your Republic waste trash containers. You are not allowed to put those out at the curb. You are not allowed to put those trash containers out at the curb. You must put your trash in plastic bags and set it out at the curb the day of your trash. I'm saying again, you are not allowed to put Republic containers out at the curb. You know, so I want everybody to be clear on that. Your trash will be picked up by GFL, but it must be in a plastic bag or a 32-gallon or 20 or 35-gallon container. Secondly, our new carts will be delivered July 23rd. They will be delivered. You'll get one cart and one recycling cart. Third thing, compost today started weekly. So your compost will be picked up weekly until December 15th. So once again, I just wanna make sure everybody's clear. Please do not put your Republic cart at the curb because it will not be dumped. Thank you.
Where you going, Jerome? Look at that.
Yes. Now, will our trash be picked up for the same day that it's always been picked up for? Mine is Wednesday, but I know with the holiday, it'll be on Thursday.
It'll be on Thursday, yes, ma'am. Trash day has not changed. All right, yes, sir.
All right, I live in the district here. Today was our first day. So to their credit, they came through and did a great bulk pickup. But probably seven out of 10 garbage cans are full of Republic cans or full sitting out by the curb. What's plan B for like my neighbors who didn't get any notice about anything, have no clue what's going on? And have been using their garbage and now their garbage cans were set out today and they're full. And they don't know what to do.
Notices were mailed out by GFL. A lot of citizens received them this past Friday and Saturday. They were late. They were late coming out, but they're out now. And once again, you can reach out to my office at 313-563-9774 if you have any questions. But we cannot use Republic's trash cans to pick up trash.
Right, I understand my point. Okay, my point is this. I received nothing from Inkster, nothing from Republic. And Friday afternoon, when I got home from work after using my garbage can for four days, I got a notice. Okay, luckily, it was a transfer of stock. And luckily, I ran into you at Home Depot.
Correct. I was gonna say, you read it?
My question is this. Go through our district and right now, seven out of 10 houses have Republic garbage cans full of garbage out on the street. That's gonna be the problem that goes through the city as this week, we pick up starts this week. What is there a plan B or is this just a thought that we thought of?
No, we're in the process of working on a plan B right now along with our attorney. So we will deal with that issue there. But I'm asking you as citizens not to put your trash in Republic's can, to set it out at the curb or get you a 32-gallon can or a 35-gallon can. Right. I got you. Well, like I said, I'll give out my number again. It's 313-563-9774.
No, no.
No, 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 sir, no.
Let's make sure it's clear. If it's in a Republic can, take it out.
Take it out.
On your garbage day. There. Well, that's what.
That's.
But if they have no clue, it's because they ain't been listening.
That's not true, Sam.
They ain't been listening. We've been saying it for months.
I mean, I agree. I live in the same district you do.
And I do too.
Same thing. Well, it's just gonna take a little while to get.
We gotta do something about that.
Yeah. Yeah.
We gotta do something about that.
But, but. Like I said, we're in the process of addressing that issue. Yes.
Well, we went out and purchased two, you know, a regular, well, a garbage can, this is the one that Republic has. So it's being.
That's okay.
That's okay, that's okay. But they're, they're hand, they're, it's not the machine. It's okay. It's okay.
What are they gonna do about my neighbor that has been out of the house for about two months? And the Republic garbage cans are still over there? No one has lived in the house for about two months.
But I.
They don't know anything about what's going on. I don't know where they went to.
Okay.
But the garbage cans are still in the backyard.
That's okay.
That's okay. Cause Republic can't go on.
They don't wanna leave the garbage cans back there full of garbage and nobody's gonna.
Republic can not go on private.
I'm not gonna go over there.
Right.
And package up their garbage.
But Republic can not go on private property and take their can.
Well, they took the can off of my property during the night.
They took it off your front.
Uh-uh, it was in the back.
Oh, okay.
In my backyard. It was at night.
They weren't supposed to do that.
They weren't supposed to do that.
Cause I came down here to check to see if anyone had.
They weren't supposed to do that.
Ms. Davis, can you give us the address of the houses they?
Yeah.
It's King 2632.
King?
King, K-T-A-N. It's a group. Yeah, they got minds at night because I was up.
We'll send that contract over.
Yeah, we'll see. We'll take care.
We'll take care.
I'll take care. Yes, ma'am. You asked, huh?
Okay, everybody, let's quiet down so we can hear the question.
Say that again. We're working on a plan right now. Like I said, we will address that. Yes, sir. Okay. Okay. Right.
Right.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. That was great. Okay, we're gonna move on to our second presentation. Historical legal fees for police-related litigation. David Jones, city attorney.
Thank you, council. I'm gonna ask Charles Hayden from our office to step up to the podium. Charles is a, just completed his second year at law school at Wayne State University. He's a former basketball player at Adrian College. He's doing internship with our office this year. He's doing a fantastic job. He helped or he did most of the compiling of the historical data with regard to legal expenses, including settlements as well as legal fees from the year 2010 to the present date. So I'll turn it over to Charles for the presentation.
Do you mind if I approach your bench? I have a couple of forms for you guys.
He's like you in court. Thank you.
Here with us for a second. All right, hopefully everyone can see the podium over here. Good evening, my name is Charles Hayden. I'm here on behalf of the city of Inkster in regards to the legal costs due to police litigation. So bear with me, I'm gonna be bouncing around on the slides. Can everyone see the slides right now? Okay, perfectly. All right, since 2010, the city has incurred 26 cases that have been filed that have been revolved around some type of police litigation. And these litigations come from the citizens filing suit against police officers and the city in regards to police misconduct and also you have. Okay. And also you have police matters in which police file suit against the city as well for employment instances. In either case, there's been 26 total cases, all incurring over $7 million. To be exact, it's been $7,92,559.35 and still counting. That's a little over a million each year roughly, if I have my math correct, $945,674.57. Now, breaking that down each by, year by year. If you look at the first two matters on the board with Kevin Holton and the state of Judy Clarkson, these are the two cases that were filed in 2010. Together, they incurred $316,600, I'm sorry, $162,503.45. I jump ahead here. The first matter. Oh, there we go. All right, that's 2010 right here. City council members, if you look at the first chart, you'll see these numbers as well. In 2011, now if you look at numbers three through five, there were three cases that were involved, that were filed, totaling $316,673.78 in total cost. Jumping down to 2012, you have seven total cases. Numbers six through 12, if you can see, this goes on this sheet and this sheet as well, all the way up to Kevin Smith at the top, right here. So in 2012, this totaled $2.3 million in total cost. In 2013, you had a total of four cases. Numbers 13 through 16, if you can see it up here. You start off with Bill Randazzo, all the way to Ackland, Markle? I apologize, I'm really terrible with names. But in this year, with the four cases, they totaled, with the seven cases, I apologize, you totaled $2.3 million, exactly $2,333,373.61. Following that in 2013, the number was less in cases with four cases. However, the total was nowhere, nowhere less. It was still $2.2 million, exactly $2,260,256,073 cents. This is numbers 13 through 16. Furthering down to 2014, you had three cases, numbers 17 through 19, in which the total cost was, I apologize, three cases 17 through 19, which the total cost was $68,502.65. 2015, you had three cases. This is numbers 20 through 22. And this year, you had a total of $1.7 million incurred in total costs and legal fees. 2016, you only had one case. This is number 23 with Beavis Stevens totaling $158,880.31 in legal fees. 2017, you had two cases totaling $36,474.49. And this year, as of now, there's one case that's still pending. That is currently at $23,737.50. Now, of these 26 cases, again, this is totaled up to seven million, a little north of $7 million. You have a million dollars in just legal fees alone, not to mention the 5 million, 5.9 million that you have and settlements or judgments that have been granted. So with that being said, it's safe to say the city has paid well over the amount that should be aggregated towards the total cost for police litigation. Mr. Jones, do you have anything to add to that?
I have a question. I'll address any questions. Let me see the mic, Charles.
All right, thank you, Charles. I wanna make a clarification. If you look at the chart, go back, Charles, can you go back to your first slide? Yeah, right here. What this chart also reflects, it shows that per year, we have the number of cases filed in any given year. That does not necessarily mean that case was resolved in that given year. So for example, Charles, go to the first three matters. Kevin Holton, the state of Judy Charleston and Dewan Walls. Those matters were filed in 2010. Well, two of those matters were filed in 2010. But it's certainly likely, for example, the second point, the state of Judy Charleston was filed in December 30th of 2010. That matter certainly wasn't wrapped up in one day. So the cost that the city incurred likely would be found in the next fiscal year of 2011. But what this chart does show you that is most instructive is the total amount. And as Charles indicated, for approximately seven and a half years, we've incurred a little over $7 million in settlements and legal expenses combined, which amounts to about $940,000 a year. And the legal fees were $1.1 million for those seven and a half years. And I just wanna add, Allen Brothers was not the attorney for many of these years and many of these cases. So don't think we put a million dollars in our pocket because we certainly didn't. Also instructive is the pie chart. Charles, yes, if you go there, you can see the distribution. Some of the outliers, we have all the cases here, council, or anyone has any questions about the particular matters. But some of the outliers were the Dennis Watkins Police Case. The Tom Diaz was an employment matter. And the Floyd Dent was 1.3. And John Hankins was 1.7. Hankins, Diaz, which were pretty big numbers, all preceded my involvement as a city attorney. But I'm still familiar with the matters and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I think the ultimate point is using the historical information. You know, I know that we do our budget every year. There's an amount that's set aside for judgments and legal expenses. But when you have cases like this coming out of the police department, it's almost impossible to budget for them. But this just gives you an idea, over and above our hourly wages, our benefits and our overtime in the police department, it shows what other costs are involved in running our police department.
I'd like to thank Charles for giving us the presentation. I think you did a great job.
Thank you, thank you.
And I don't have to remind the residents, you know, obviously, we don't put 3, 4, 5, $700,000 in our budget to take care of these settlements. It ends up on your taxes, at least since the time we went to consent agreement. When we have a big settlement, many, many times, you see it on your tax bill. And that's how we've been paying for them. Because we do spend a lot of money between judgments and legal fees, a lot of money, which you can see by the information that was presented. So just something you can chew on, you can think about. We're always trying to figure out how we cut costs so we can provide more services to you and not just be paying out money to folks. All right. Public here, oh, first before I move forward, I wanna acknowledge Brenda Jones, I have her, Brenda Jones, President of Detroit City Council. Everybody wave your hands so everybody can see you. Thank you for attending our meeting. Consent agenda.
So may, do we move, Mr. Chair?
All right. We probably move to support it, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Boards and commissions. Sandra Watley?
I have two cable commissions, but I'm waiting for them to turn in their papers.
Okay. You wanna?
So the people can see.
All this stuff.
So we can vote on it at the next meeting. I have been calling them, but I think they're two good selections for cable commission. One is Lawrence Simmons.
Lawrence Simmons.
He's a videographer and he helped us great this year. So, and he does this for a living. So I think he'll make a great addition to the cable commission as well as, you know, giving us different insights on what he does. The other is, her name is Marion. I can't pronounce the last name. I wanna say Bangkok. No, that's not it. But she works for Toyota.
Marion Bickham.
There you go. Thank you, Bickham. I told you. And she works for Toyota. Does a lot of PR work and things of that nature.
Marketing.
Yeah, and she is an extra resident, so marketing and stuff like that. So I think she'll make a great addition too. As soon as I get that paperwork, I will ship it to you all and then I will make the.
Motion.
Yes.
All right, great. Anybody else have any nominations? Okay, we'll move forward. On to new business.
Consideration and approval of a recycle ban contract with Midwest Recycling.
Do we move, Mr. Chair?
Board. We probably move to support it, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes.
Consideration and approval of adoption of a resolution that allows for the City of Inkster to continue waiving the penalty for late filing of a property transfer affidavit.
Do you move?
Board, it probably moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes.
Consideration and approval of an offer to purchase one vacant mixed-use parcel lot on the west side of Beach Daily Road between Dartmouth Ave and Andover, as duly noted, in the amount of one thousand dollars to key management, Kamani Powell.
Do you move? Board, it probably moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes.
Consideration and approval of an offer to purchase two contiguous vacant residential parcels located on the east side of Hickory Ave between Carlisle Ave and Andover, as duly noted, in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars, is that correct, Shaday? To Wadi Moore? Waitmore, excuse me.
The board, it probably moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes.
Is this one two fifty-two?
Uh, yep.
Consideration and approval of an offer to purchase two contiguous vacant residential parcels located on the east side of Allen Ave between Pine Ave and Lehi Ave, as duly noted, in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to Sonia and Stacy Burner, Burner, excuse me.
Do you move?
Board, it probably moved and supported, discussion.
Mr. Chair, um, I have no problem with your, you know, this is, I guess, the, the straight-up paperwork with the police office.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Alright, public participation. Ruthie Williams.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here on the great event that's finna happen this weekend coming up. I'm sure everybody got a flyer, but we're just hoping to see all you guys out there and all the families, we're having the carnival, we're having fireworks, we even got Ranch Allen to come out and visit with us. So hoping to see all you guys come out. We're starting as early as noon on Saturday, as late as firework time, so we say between eleven, eleven fifteen. And then we're starting Sunday, um, Reverend Duckworth is gonna bring his whole church out, and we'll probably be there at like ten o'clock that night, so hope to see everyone there.
Thank you. Okay, Officer Lebo.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. First, I wanna apologize for wearing a hat. I put it on today before realizing I'd be sitting in today, and the only thing about females, once you put this hat on, it's not coming back off in a public setting. So sorry, apologize. But on to my announcements, um, a few things. The, uh, I'm very excited to talk about the National Night Out that we have happening on Tuesday, August seventh, from five to nine P M. It's going to be in the parking lot of the police department. We have a flyer over here on the table, and it's basically gonna be a big community event. What National Night Out is all about is the police and the community coming together just for a good time. We're gonna have food and beverages, face painting, bounce houses, a dunk tank that I'll probably be sitting in, so, you know. Games for all ages. We're gonna have karaoke, live entertainment, music, uh, free giveaways, public safety information. And we already have, uh, over thirty organizations from within the City of Inkster on board to, uh, set up booths, to give resources to our citizens. So please check us out on Facebook to, uh, for more information. We are also seeking organizations to join in. We have room for many more. Anyone who has some information they think that the city, citizens need to know, please contact me. We're not permitting selling, uh, selling of items there. However, it's good for name recognition and to get your word out there. You can contact me at three one three, four hundred, five three eight seven. Or, um, you can, I'm bleh, sorry. You can contact me on Facebook or through email, alebo@cityofinkster.com. Like I said, check out a flyer, it's got all the organizations. If you're already an organization, Inkster Task Force, that hasn't got me their logo, please do so. So that way I can add it on to the flyer.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And what time's it gonna be?
Five to nine P M. It's gonna be a lot of fun, I can't wait. We are also gonna be having our next movie night, that is coming up, Friday, July thirteenth at nine P M. We're watching Moana, can't wait, and people are excited for that one. As usual, we'll have free hot, hot dogs, popcorn, snow cones, and other refreshments. Hopefully Detroit Scoops will come by as well and give out free ice cream. Coffee with a Cop is two days prior, on July eleventh. It is, um, at six thirty P M. at Gracie C. Postaria. Come on out and let's have a conversation. Last but not least, we are still seeking high school age applicants for our Leadership Academy that we'll be putting on mid-August. We don't have the dates finalized yet, I will let you know as soon as we do. But our, um, students will be learning things such as public speaking, interview skills, resume writing, and financial literacy. Help set your kids up for success, send them to the camp. Any of you questions, contact me, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lebo?
Yes. I mean, I'll trade off with you, Mr. Mayor. I was trying to save you for one, but Ruthie just wants to drive that bus right over you.
I'll get her back, don't worry about it. Ernest Hendricks.
Yes, Jerome. Good evening. When I wrote that out, I was going to speak on some of the issues of the airport traffic noise. There was some erroneous information given, but I won't, I'll do that for another time. But Jerome piqued my interest in his presentation. I'm trying to understand, I understand that the bids were open and approved and what have you back in May of last year, or this year, I'm sorry, this year. And what happened that we did not have a seamless transition from May until July the twenty-third? Wouldn't we, you know, we'll get the new cans, I don't, I don't understand that. Did something happen that we're not aware of, or that we should be aware of?
Essentially, what happened was we approved it, I believe, in May, and then there was a couple of weeks of negotiating the actual contract. The new contractor did not wanna order our new bins until we had a signed contract, because obviously they have to spend their own money to order the new bins. Um, and so that was the delay on ordering the bins. We tried to get an extension of the Republic. We asked them to extend it just one more month, so we would have a seamless transition. They tried to extort us and get us to buy all the old bins from them for sixty-five thousand dollars. We didn't need them, because we're getting new bins. So we said no, they said, okay, we're not extending the contract, and put our bins out, we're coming to pick them up. So that's essentially what the problem was.
Okay, now, these new bins that are coming, is that something they have to order, they have them on stock, or what have you?
They had to order them because they're putting our city seal on them, and there are also chips in there where they're assigned to each address, so if someone steals your bin, we can figure out where it's supposed to go. So it takes about six weeks, I think, they order, but we ordered, they should be here the third week of July, crossing our fingers, so...
Okay, thank you. The other thing I have wondering about is, um, from the letter that I got from, uh, GFC or whatever?
G F A.
Yeah, it said that not to put the trash out the day before, but to put it out the day of, before seven o'clock. Now, that's fine. Well, seven A M. to seven P M., but if you, if the trash truck comes around prior to that, I mean, there, you know, people like myself, I get up early. But there are citizens in the community, elderly people and what have you, they don't get up at six thirty in the morning to put those trash cans out. I mean, can we make some kind of accommodation for that kind of thing, to put them out the date night before or something?
Oh, yeah, that's, it's not an issue, I mean, the only reason why we weren't suggesting people put out the night before, because now they're not in a can, so the animals might get into it. So, I mean, really, it's, of course you can put out the night before. We just, we just didn't want trash all in the street, because if the raccoons get into it or something like that.
Well, I understand that, you know, but I think that, um, uh, we have Jerome go around, you know. He's a good man. But I wanna make one, uh, it, it hurts me to do this, but I gotta do it. Jerome and the weed cutting guy, they did a good job.
It hurts you to say that?
No, I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding. I have been...
Alright, we doing something wrong?
I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding, Jerome's a good man. But there's one area that they do, that if they would go back and like sweep the street up with the grass clippings along Beach Daily, you know, there's a lot of debris along Beach Daily, all the way from Michigan Avenue to Annapolis. On the east side, Darren Heights, theirs curves are totally clean, and ours are totally dirty. And I guess those trucks coming out of that area, and we need to do something with them in terms of dragging that dirt out into the street like that. And the same thing up on Michigan Avenue, when the, the trucks coming out of there. We need to probably address that issue, okay? What, is it, is that a contractor? That does that? Okay, I see. And the, the grass clipping need to be, people that leave their grass clipping in the street need to be ticketed, because all that stuff gets onto the drain, and it clogs it, and the street floods and what have you. So I know the ordinance people are busy and tight, but, you know... You told me I could have eight minutes. But if we can do that, uh, at least have ordinance people look, take a look at that, with the people that are leaving their grass clipping in the street, particularly these contractors are doing it, you know, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
My ass, how much would it cost if you like to have it all, would it be a charge if you wanted extra garbage cans?
Okay, Ned Sanders. Hold on, hold on a second.
Okay, thanks.
You got a question for Jerome? Hey, let's, let's let Mrs. Sanders start.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here on behalf of the Palmer Street residents. And last week, there was an event held by the City of Inkster. And, um, Star Truck Company, they provided the tables and chairs. Uh, they got stuck in front of, on the grass in front of, on the side of the complex.
Okay.
And they left a ten-foot trail, because they had a tow truck, they got stuck. And I got a video of it, if you wanna see it. Kinda tells the story, it won't take but a second to hit play on it. They left it, and I called, um, Clarence Odom.
Yeah, Councilman Odom did call me about it.
Oh, okay, you know about that?
Yeah, I'm familiar.
Okay, if you just look at all the orange substances, uh, the whole, and on the street, um, the fire department.
You already saw it, Jerome, right? Go show Mr. Bickham.
Clarence saw it.
Yeah. He blind.
The fire department bought the truck for PS water.
Yes.
There's orange substances all over the street, all down the street.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what that was, inspected. Oh, this? Okay. Okay. Okay, that's what I saw. Okay. We'll go, we have the street sweeper hit that street, okay, we will take care of it.
Okay, um, the other issue that I have is, um, the event, they blocked off the end of the street on Palmer. And so everybody pulled in the driveways to get back out the middle belt. And in the, in the past, what you've guys done is, when you're having an event on our street, it's a very short street on the side, you always send a letter to us, informing us that, hey, the street can be blocked off, cars will be, uh, you'll be affected by cars parking incorrectly. And can we go back to where you actually sent a letter to the residents?
Actually, that should have happened. And just, it wasn't the City of Inkster's event, it was United Way who put on the event. But you still should have been, should have noticed to let you know what was happening.
Right.
And the street would be blocked off, so we'll definitely make sure we stay on top of it.
Okay, okay. Uh, just one other thing, um, they cut the water off, uh, two months ago on our street. At nine o'clock in the morning, I saw the guy do it, he went down the end, turned it and cut the water off. It came back on the sixth o'clock that evening. No one told us, we could have put water in our tubs, we have elderly sick people on our street, the toilets, they would go out and buy water.
When did that happen?
About two months ago.
That's the first time I'm hearing about that.
Yeah, well, I called my accountant, but see, he wanted me to come down here and present some of this stuff, because I never do. And so you, you won't know unless somebody tells you.
Right, right.
But, um, Clarence Odom has done a good job in kinda, you know, um, helping with some of this stuff. Um, the other, the other issue is the tennis courts. I've been living on Palmer for forty-eight years, and I was there when there was a junkyard, and they knocked the junkyard down and put the recor, Inkster Recreational Building up. And so, um, I've been sort of keeping the tennis courts so far as keeping the grass out the cracks, putting the tennis, uh, nets up, and then taking them back down. Jerome will tell you that the, the prayer council gave him permission to, permission to buy weed begun and Roundup. And I would put it in my container, sprayed it, sprayed the cracks in the tennis court, and then Bud would take and blow everything off, and I whip it. That hasn't happened the last couple of years, and the nets have not come up, because I wasn't feeling well. But I wanna continue that, I've been doing it for thirty years. So I asked Jerome, can you, can the council okay that, so I can continue? Uh, you're familiar with the products, right?
I know, um, former reg director Craig Lewis and you are working together.
Right.
So I would ask you to reach out to Will Morris, interim director right here, and he can assist you with that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, and as far as the water main back home Palmer, I was out on site for that. We did notify residents that were home, because that was a two-day repair. Your water was off almost two days, and I did speak to...
I didn't get, I didn't get a call.
So we know the, you might have not been home, because we notified people like that evening, because we had fixed it, and we ran into some problems there. And so I came out on site myself.
Okay, I'll, I'll accept that. Um, the other thing is, um, I'm a member of the Dearborn Record Club, and I heard that you were fixing the tennis courts up, so I reached out to the, uh, owner of the Dearborn Record Club. He gave me over two hundred new tennis balls. And I want to give them to you, but I would like to at least get a letter saying that thank you for the tennis balls.
Absolutely, that was coming anyway. I was aware of that.
Oh, oh, okay.
Your letter was coming, sure.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that. And, um, the only other thing is, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Craig? Oh, you're good, okay. How you pronounce your last name, Craig?
Cole Bilka.
Cole Bilka, okay, thank you. Barbara Cooper? Deacon Rose?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. On behalf of the Inkster Goodfellows, we will be having another Fish Fry, August the eighteenth, that's Friday, August the eighteenth. Tickets are ten dollars again, and we need your support. And also, anyone will, uh, we started getting the paperwork ready for the ads for our paper. We wanna have, uh, a great, successful paper drive as we had last year, and we need all of your support for that. Um, I don't know if anyone mentioned, um, but I would like for everyone to keep Gabe lifted up in prayer. That's understandable, you know, that he's broken up after fifty-plus years with one person. That's awesome. Um, but we just need to keep Mr. Inkster lifted up, because Gabe is around Inkster picking up trash and doing anything for our city, and we as a city need to come out and support him. Um, and my other thing is, I'm working with the camp, the National Christians in Action Camp, and we do not have our big funder that we used to have, and we are soliciting donations from the community. Water, drink boxes, anything you can think of, monetary donations as well, papers, pencils, markers, anything you wanna donate to us is greatly appreciated. And also, I'd like to see everybody this weekend.
What's the time of day for the Fish Fry again?
The Fish Fry will start at eleven o'clock, and it will be going till four thirty.
Where at?
At the complex, Inkster complex, yeah.
That's the same day as the...
No, Episcopal loser is the next day, right? I'm sorry, I was at the seven, whatever that Friday is, I was at the seventeen. I've been looking at the Episcopal loser for the last month now, and I... I've been looking at the Episcopal loser for the last month now and I've been announcing that and I got my date. It is August the seventeenth. Eleven AM to four thirty PM at the Inxter recreational complex, twenty twenty-five Middle Belt.
Can I preorder my dinner this time?
You sure can. This is a fish fry, yeah, I'm taking orders for everybody. Because we ran out and I know he needs some more perch, was it perch?
Oh, yeah.
It was a perch, yeah. So I'm taking orders so I can make sure.
Put my name down.
Yeah, it was ocean perch.
Is that what you have this time?
We had catfish, we're gonna have all three again.
Oh, very good, put my name down, number one.
Okay, I'm certain. I'm gonna send a piece of paper around, you all give me. Yes, I can send you all of that for the events calendar.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And Petey, one more thing.
Mm-hmm. That's okay, everybody. Pretty much everybody needs to know that name.
If they, if they want to contact you, should they use your number, is there a number for Goodfellows?
Okay. Yep, three one three five oh five one one four zero. All right, thank you.
Audible Brenda Jones.
Good evening to you, Mayor, and to you, Mayor Portim, and all of the council members and all of the directors and officers. I just wanted to come out to hear the business of Inxter, to see the things that were important to you all and see how you actually conduct your business here at City Hall. As you know, I was here last week to see the Assistant Chief get pinned, as a matter of fact, I pinned him. And so I wanted to just come out to actually see how you handle your business here in the City of Detroit, Inxter versus us in the City of Detroit. And to see your business and the things that were important to you all that you were dealing with in the City of Inxter. So thank you for giving me this opportunity.
All right, thank you. William Miller.
Good evening, family, how's everybody?
Fine, thank you, how are you?
I'm well. I'm up here today as president of the National Action Network here for the Inxter Western Wayne County Chapter. We plan on finishing up the July and August season with a conversation with the candidates. And we want to try and have a more intimate conversation with each candidate, ask them some more pertinent questions as to what it is they're gonna do, i.e. for Inxter as well as other portions of the district. On July seventh, by eleven AM, that's a Saturday, John Conyers family, his campaign is gonna be coming out, also known as his family, is gonna be coming out to have a conversation with us with regard to what his new strategy is for his current run for the seat, what their plans are. You know, with the new circumstance that he's going through currently. On July seventeenth, on Tuesday evening about six PM, Rashida Tlaib is gonna be coming out, we're gonna be having a conversation with her, with her large treasure trove of cash that she's been able to obtain. We're concerned that she's not gonna be able to focus on us with the donors that she has behind her, so we want to know what her plan is on measuring what she's, the people who's donated to her in such large numbers versus the issues that we have in our community. We want to make sure that we are still gonna be a focal point with what it is that she's gonna be doing. Since President Brenda Jones is here, I'm also gonna ask her to come out. She has been kind enough to come out on a previous conversation with another candidate, I'm gonna try, if they are able to have them come out so we can ask to her some specific questions as well. As far as for me, I had a question as far as council packets, is there any way that we could get to see the council packet? Like, is it gonna be available, is it like, be available on the website for download either before or even after the meeting is taking place so we can research the topics a little bit better?
What time are they available for the meeting?
It's the Wednesday before.
The Wednesday before, you can get them?
Prior to the meeting, mm-hmm.
Can there be a link on the front page somewhere?
You can go to City Council, you'll click on City Council and then you'll click on the packets and they'll come up.
And they'll come up.
Two thousand and nineteen, yeah.
Okay.
Agenda and the packet comes up.
All right, and other than that, Jerome spoke about the garbage because I got a whole bunch of phone, because I just came back from vacation and when I got off the plane, it was like. So as far as that with the Plan Bs, I know he said there was a Plan B coming up with the attorney is, if it wasn't so hot, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a problem. Because, you know, we've skipped some trash collections before, but it's usually in the wintertime. You know, now with the, with the warm, every minute is gonna come, so if this is just gonna be a microcosm of what's going on through each district, if we, because we had quite a few, I grabbed some of the GFL guys because they was, people was surrounding them over here by the school over here over in Avondale, asking them what was going on, so. Is there, if there, a plan comes out, is there any way that we can get calls, folks who call us, so we can try and curb some of this stuff to try and get whatever plan is put out, you know, initiated on the neighborhoods or something?
I mean, I mean, don't expect some super duper plan, I mean, really the issue is people put their garbage out in Republic hands this week because they didn't know or they didn't read the flyer.
Yes.
And GFL is not allowed to touch them because Republic sent us a little hot letter saying, don't touch our personal property, if you do, we're gonna sue you. So they were, again, still mad because they didn't get the contract, so that's really what was going on. So that's why they couldn't pick up their garbage, they didn't have a problem picking it up, but Republic basically threatened us legally. So, and people didn't know that, so they didn't know that they had to take it out of the can so we can, they would have picked it up if it was on the street, but people didn't know.
So basically, I can just go through my overall zones, the thirty-two ounce cans and put it in people's garage till next week?
Yeah.
All right.
Have fun, man. Deacon Rose, come on up, you got a question.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Jerome, I had two questions for you, first of all, from, I think it's Eastwood on Avondale all the way down to Henry Rough, those streets got potholes down through there, you drive down through there, your car's doing this. So I was wondering when were they going to fill in the potholes over there? Also, second question is that all through the City of Inxter, I noticed when I be riding through that they got the tree limbs hanging all over the sidewalks. And people came and walked down the sidewalk, they had to walk in the street, so I was wondering when was the tree trimming company is going to clip the limbs from over the sidewalks and also hanging over the streets. So that's two questions I have, could you give me an answer on that, please? Not at this time, huh? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Eastwood between Inxter Road all the way down to Henry Rough. Yeah, on Avondale, it's really bad, it's really bad.
All right, City Clerk?
I just wanted to remind citizens, go ahead, Ms. Davis.
You have a what? Audience, let me see, it's not up here, but come on up, Ms. Davis. No, it's not here. Come on, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. And to everyone that's present, I don't have a complaint, but I do have a real concern about my water bill. I have been trying for over a year to get my water bill straightened out. If I was not concerned about it, I would not have went to the City Hall several times, I've talked to several people, and it still has not been straightened out. Do you, you don't want to know the real problem, do you?
It's up to you.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, I was about to ask you what is straightened out, not been straightened out, mean, but if you want to do it, the treasurer's here, so you can keep them all night if you want to.
I just, in case anything come back on me, I want everybody to know that I have been up here several times trying to get my water bill straightened out. For a whole year, they have not charged me anything for water. And I am not the sort of person who will not pay their bills. I have never had a delinquent water bill. If they got my bill straightened out, send me a bill to my house, the bill will be paid, but I have not gotten my, and I've been trying, and I'm concerned about it. Because I'm afraid that when everything spanned out, that they will hit me with a five or six thousand dollar water bill and I'm not gonna pay it. And I don't want to say what I may do. So I want everybody to know that I have been trying to get my water bill straightened out. I have a real, I'm concerned about it.
And, and I know we've talked about.
I got the water bill here for this month, I've saved all my water bills.
And if, I'll have to take a look, but I think if I recall correctly, each month she was below kind of the minimum, basically you weren't registering one unit, so that was the reason for. We were having to check on, confirming if the meter was correct, because I remember talking to you about the zero bills. And when we looked at the, at the usage that we see here in the office, you know, your, your account was registering, we were getting meter reads, but it was just a situation where each month you were below the minimum usage. We'll have to take, take another look at that and, you know, so it wasn't, it wasn't so much a billing issue, we were getting, getting the readings back, it just wasn't enough to generate any, any type of, any, any type of usage, so. Let me take a look at that, I think, I think I'm recalling your specific.
I have all those bills.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I don't want any backlash from this.
So if anything, I don't think it's so much a billing, it doesn't appear to be a billing issue, it could very well be an issue with that, with that meter.
Oh, Ms. Davis, I promise, we'll send you a bill.
I don't want a thousand four or five hundred dollar bill. Okay, now, one, I only had two concerns.
Okay.
The other concern is about my taxes, the city tax, what does that include?
You're talking about the, the city millage? Which millage specifically are you talking about?
It, on here, it just says the tax description, the city, and the amount.
Yes.
Doesn't have any millage on there.
Can I?
That's why I'm trying to get an explanation, I want to know what I'm paying for.
Understood.
See those where I have those lines drawn? I'm old, but I, I'm concerned.
Okay, you're, you're talking about, so, two things, you have the, you asked about the city millage and then the second one, I believe, is the judgment levy.
No, I'm more concerned about this.
So, so the, the city millage is, that's the general city millage that goes to basically the, the general fund operations. That millage is, is what's applied to all property owners in the City of Inxter. So, you know, as everyone probably knows, we have a number of different millages that we collect on, some are city-based, some are county-based, that's what we call, consider the city's general operating millage.
And also, the solid waste disposal, is that the garbage?
That, and that is the garbage, we have two revenue sources for, for garbage, one is the solid waste, there's a millage and then we also have a disposal fee. The disposal fee this year is eighty-one dollars on the summer bill and eighty-one dollars on the winter bill for a total of a hundred and sixty-two dollars for the, for the tax year.
Okay, the administrative fee.
I feel like I'm, I'm having a property tax quiz here, so the administrative, administrative fee, administrative fee is, is gonna be one percent of your overall tax bill. And that's basically to cover the cost for us to generate and mail out and collect on those, those tax bills, that's a statutory amount that we're able to levy for each tax bill.
One more thing, the senior services.
Senior services is a voter-approved millage, it goes to the Commission on Aging.
Okay.
And so that's their funding source and those, those monies go, we collect those monies on behalf of the Commission on Aging and those revenues go directly to the Commission on Aging as we collect them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk?
I just wanted to remind residents that July ninth is the last day to register to vote for the upcoming August eighth, I'm sorry, August seventh primary election. Also, if you're interested in being an election inspector for that election, please contact the City Clerk's office at three one three five six three nine seven seven zero, thank you.
City Treasurer?
Just wanted to, some of my thunder was stolen with the property tax questions, but property tax bills obviously have, have gone out, everyone should, should have received those or you should be receiving those shortly. If you do not for whatever reason receive your tax bill, firstly, that information is always available online and if you need a copy of your tax bill, feel free to come in to City Hall or call the Treasurer's office. And everyone have a safe and happy Fourth of July as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Watley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have some citizens who informed me that they were inconvenienced by a, some street work that was done on Betty Lane. And they asked me if I would relay to the council and the DPW that when something of this nature is to happen, couldn't they just notify the citizens in the area that they would be inconvenienced by the situation? They blocked off the street, driveways were blocked, I sent all that information to Director Bivens and he took care of it. But this is just a request that they're making that anytime anything happens in an area, if you could just notify those people in the immediate area, that it will be going on so they can make other arrangements, that was it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Olden.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. I got a question related to, and maybe Jerome can answer the question, and I'm asking it because I got a call from the Council on our streets, plus I noticed that different locations, affairs going on to the streets. But I'm, I'm wondering where we are with, you know, dealing with the affairs of the streets, not just my area, about the, because I'm continuing to have, you know, problems, questions. So I'm wondering where, where we are with that.
Man, I guess the replacement is the stuff we vote on like our COLA, Annapolis, we're always patching though, I mean, so the, the guys are always out patching potholes. But we all vote on the replacement when we're actually tearing up the street and replacing with new concrete. So I mean, if there's some area in particular, you just have to let them know, I do see them out there in the mornings though.
What Councilman Olden is referring to is the DPW restoration work, where we've done water main breaks, so we've done some road work in the area and we have a company come out and repair those. So that's what you see going around the whole city right now, we're doing restoration work.
Now, the other, the other part of my question, I know that a while back we had a communication came before council concerning the monies that we're supposed to get for road repairs, state. I think myself and the Treasurer talked about it, I talked with him, he and I talked, I'm wondering, and I understand we're supposed to have gotten funds in sometime this month or the previous month. And I'm wondering when that money's come in, do we have a plan set up to deal with the, with the streets? And I'm asking the question because I get the calls from people within the community. I want to be able to give them, you know, the proper information and so forth, and that's my reason for asking the question because, you know, it, it's happening in different locations.
To the, you and all of us and to the public and to Mayor and Council, what Councilman Olden is referring to is we got roughly a hundred and sixty thousand dollars extra in our Act Fifty-One money this year. And myself along with the Treasurer are developing a plan to do some local roads. We just gotta find out where the most severe roads are and address those issues. We can't totally fix everything with a hundred and sixty thousand, but we plan on doing something on the local roads because my project on Annapolis was major, our COLA was a split between roads and water. So we're looking at doing some work this upcoming fiscal year on, on local roads. So we're formulating that plan. So we're formulating that plan now, as today is the beginning of our new fiscal year.
And just so people know, don't get too excited. A hundred and fifty thousand could fix about a block.
Right.
One block. One block. So, um, it won't ta, it'll take long to create that plan.
Yeah.
There's not much to it.
But the last thing that I have, um, and, and, and I, I think is very important to, to let everybody know, is three dow, three houses down from where I stay on Emerson, uh, one of the neighbors who had been out of town for, I guess, a week or two, uh, came home. When they came home, they found a person in their house, in their bed, with their kids. Yes, this was, this was just last week, just recently. So, uh, you know, I, I guess basically what I'm saying is let's be aware what's going on, what's happening, and keeping our eyes open, because we have, and I, I assume it was a squatter.
In the, in the room with the squatter's kids?
No, no, no. In the room with the people that lived in the house who was out of town. They came to their house.
Their children or the squatter's children?
They were in the house with their kid, and, and the person that owned the house.
The squatter's kids.
The squatter, the squatter was in the house with, with, with their kid in the bed. So I'm just, I'm just telling you what's going on, what's happening. That was three doors down from me, so we, we, we need to be careful and keep our eyes open on what's happening, what's going on around.
That's deep.
I said the squatter's kids was in the bed with the squatter.
He was there with the squatter's kids.
When I asked you, you said their kids.
Would y'all leave Councilman Oden alone? Squatter's kids. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Ooh, that was a close one. Uh, I have two things this evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, if you are interested in having your kindergarten or, and first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade students uh, have some educational work this summer, the sixth annual Lamplighters Education Boot Camp is being held July tenth through August second, Tuesday through Thursday each week from nine AM to twelve noon. They serve breakfast at eight thirty AM, and they serve lunch at eleven thirty AM. Uh, it's at St. James United Methodist Church, three hundred fifty-five Annapolis Road in Westland. If you are interested, please call seven three four seven two nine one seven three seven. It's an excellent educational opportunity for students to beef up their reading and math skills, and it's free of charge for anyone who participates. Secondly, on Saturday, uh, the eleventh of August, from eight AM to two PM, there is a Wayne County Household Hazardous Waste Collection Opportunity. Uh, it will be held at the Westland Shopping Center, uh, in Westland, but, um, it is for the whole of Wayne County. Such things as paint, dyes, antifreeze, batteries, fire extinguishers, thermometers, computer CPUs and equipment, nail polish, pharmaceutical waste, fertilizer, and lan, and other chemicals, cell phones, fax machines, copiers, those kinds of things. So, um, items that will not be accepted will include commercial waste, industrial waste, radioactive material, explosives, ammunition, fifty-five gallon drums, household trash, refrigerators, microwaves, other appliances, et cetera. But, um, for those other general items that I previously announced, that's August eleventh from eight AM to two PM at the Westland Shopping Center in Westland.
Just to let you know, I went to the one in July that they had out here. It took me four hours to get through there. That's how long that line was. That was over there by Henry Ford Community College.
Right.
It took four hours, so if you're going, try and do the eight o'clock.
Right.
Anything later than that, and you're gonna take some time.
Be stuck. Very good information. Thank you.
You're done. Okay. Councilman Chisholm?
So, August eighteenth at Direct Center will be the Episcopal Uza. This event is offered to the city of Inglewood in collaboration with the Episcopal Diocese of Michigan, the Inglewood Task Force, various community stakeholders, and St. Clement's Church. It'll promote community together, community togetherness, school readiness, and unity in the community. Together, over one thousand book bags with school supplies will be distributed. This is a free back-to-school carnival, free food, fun for all ages, bounce houses, free backpacks, games and prizes, and live music. That's August eighteenth from ten AM to three PM at Direct Center. And then, I just wanted to voice, 'cause my phone had been ringing, and I had to send everybody emails and stuff regards to it, uh, the rubbish thing. I think, uh, some of the disconnect is that I got a notice in the mail, later course, from GFL. My neighbors did not. Um, all throughout my district is, my, some of my citizens have stated, when you drive through, everyone's garbage cans are out. So, that's why I was asking, um, well, I will ask. Once the resolution is brought forward, can I be kept in the loop? 'Cause the only alternative I had is that if, was to just kinda go door-to-door passing out the flyer that came from the clerk's office and from DPS, because there are some citizens who still don't know because of issues with the public access channel. They didn't get the mailer, they're not on social media, and they just didn't get information. I know everybody says, "Well, where are they at? Why aren't they listening?" But we do have a certain population of citizens who get information different ways, and they haven't received notice at all. So, that's all.
Councilwoman Howard?
Thing I have to say, just have a safe holiday.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Um, I want to reiterate for the citizens, you, if your parts of life are still being upset by the airplane noise, I'm gonna give out that number once again. Airy code seven three four nine four two three two two two, or email noise@wca.us. Um, but I can, think for these fifty years, I can remember, I always remember these, these planes flying directly over my house, and, um, they've been disturbing our parts of life for a long time now, so we had to keep making noise so we can push back so they can either do it differently for Westland, or either have another flight path. I got a email from Great Lakes Water Authority, and it talks about, it talks about, um, how we can save money on our, on our sewer. So what I needed to know from Jerome, do we have a, uh, a combined sewer system or a separate great sewer system? Combined. Um, so it's said from, from Great Lakes Water Authority that we, our systems probably would benefit more if we had a separate sewer system, one for the sanitary sewer and one for a, a storm sewer. Can we check into that?
Yeah, we're, we're just a couple billion dollars short.
Right, right. You said check into it.
Check it.
Go, go to Walmart, see if you can buy one.
So, no, but, but, but...
If they just want to put the thirty dollars in, they have to have some kind of finances behind it.
No, but in all seriousness, um, and I don't mean to make light of the situation. Uh, city of Inglewood, like a lot of communities, um, our, our infrastructure was, was laid at a time when we were kinda early in the process, if you will. Um, probably, what, early part of, early mid-part of the, uh, twentieth century? Um, and so we have a, we have a combined system, which is not the most efficient. At the time, it was, I'm sure it was kinda state-of-the-art. Um, but, uh, obviously, in order to come at this time and try and separate those would require a significant amount of, of capital investment, and so that, that was, um, you know, my reply was that it is a very expensive, um, venture to do.
Great Lakes Authority is reaching out to, to the communities, to municipalities, to, to sit down at the table with them to, to look at it.
Can you, can you forward that to Jerome and myself?
Yes, I can. I can. Um, my last thing. Stop Inglewood.
Alright. Um, Lunch with the Mayor on July nineteenth, gonna be starring Mayor Pro Temp Williams. Um, he will be accepting all praise for the great summer fest that's gonna happen July seventh and eighth. So, uh, just bring gifts, bring him gifts on that day. Um, Employee of the Month for the month of June is Officer Andrea Lebo. Uh, we're gonna make her from May and June, 'cause we skipped May. We're gonna get a picture, we're gonna put it up in City Hall. She won't be wearing that hat in the picture. And we also made mention, uh, William Ratliff is now our Assistant Chief of Police. He was given a promotion, what was it, last week? Last week. It was, he was actually pinned and promoted last week. Um, so he's our new Assistant Police Chief, so. Yeah, yeah, it was last year. He late. And also, for those who are, don't wanna go home, we're gonna go to John's Good Time this evening and discuss the thirteenth district congressional candidates, and who we wanna get behind as a city. So if you want to have some input and discuss it, we'll be there drinking, uh, non-alcoholic beverages. So hopefully, we'll see you there. That's all I have. Everybody have a safe holiday. Much for a shout-out.
Support.
I have, uh, something I need to talk to you about.
Can we do it after the meeting?
No, I just talked about it now, it's possible. I didn't put an explain paper, but I will put in one tomorrow. I'll put it in, but right now, I'd like to talk to you.
Tomorrow?
Didn't wait possible?
I'll talk to you. Can we close the meeting up? You can come on up, we can talk all night.
I want you to go everybody to hear what I have to say. Even the police force, because they're gonna be involved with what I have to say.
That's what public participation is for. That's why people are filling out these slips. Did you get one? Is that it? I can't see it. No, that's something good. Um, come on, I just, I'm gonna accommodate you, 'cause you didn't, come on, come on up, let's talk.
I'll get up here right here.
Come on.
Thank you. Yes, I am a citizen of the city of Inglewood and a homeowner.
What's your name?
Patsy Oliver.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know if you have any knowledge, but I think it was last week, we had an incident on Parkwood and Middlebell, where a automobile ran into the apartment complex right there on the corner. Okay, my complaint is cars are coming down there so fast like they're riding on the freeway. We have too many kids in the area. People getting out of their cars, they gotta help and shut their door, 'cause cars is zooming down the street.
On Parkwood or Middlebell?
Huh?
On Parkwood or Middlebell?
On, on Parkwood. Between, uh, Middlebell and Harrison, but they get to the corner, they don't stop. They help and zoom, and help and go on the other side of Parkwood there. It's not right. Something needed to be done. We need some police officers sitting back in these vacant houses, sitting way back, and then when they see one zooming down the street, go after and stop them. Or either put speed bumps throughout the streets, slow them down. 'Cause I hate to see anybody get injured through there. And then now that this apartment place got, uh, messed up because of somebody zooming down the street, talking on the phone, and lost control of their car. And that's what I have to say.
We appreciate, we'll...
Something needed to be done about it.
Okay.
But hey, but with the claim paper, I could put in, and that could turn it into the police department.
But can you, can you talk to me when you, when we get through here, though?
When, when we get through here? Yes, I can.
Uh, we're gonna, I mean, you don't have, if you want to, you can, but I, we're gonna address tomorrow at the staff meeting. We have a staff meeting once a week, so we'll address it with, uh, the police chief or assistant chief tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, but I will talk with you afterward. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Look, y'all, y'all, y'all gonna make me be, I'm not trying to be rude.
No, I, I don't wanna be rude either, but I put in a request to, to, to address you and the council.
But it, you was late.
And I know I'm late, 'cause I let another meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize for that, but I need to address the mayor and council. Just for the two, one meeting.
See, y'all, y'all putting me in a box. The problem is, if, if I let you do it, then I gotta, gotta let everybody do it. You know, people wanna talk whenever they wanna talk. I gotta let them talk, 'cause I let you do it, and they know we friends. So, I mean, what?
Well, you just let her talk.
She was about to call Channel Seven, so I was try, I was trying to nip that in the butt. Okay, you got thirty seconds. Come on.
I don't know why you wanna do that, because I don't normally dress council, but I need to dress you tonight because I think it's unfair, when you sit here, okay, when I got ready to run youth camp, I was promised two workers, okay? Okay, with the sixty thousand dollars, whatever, that's supposed to have been there, and I was promised two workers, okay? I haven't got anything, okay? And then when I called there, I, I, I talked with Brother Will here, and I come to find out that somebody said we wasn't even on the list. Okay?
Went on the list for what?
For the workers, summer workers.
Look, I, I discussed it with the former director, so I know it was discussed, and I know exactly what you were promised. So you should just call me. You ain't gotta come and counsel me. Just call me, we'll deal with it.
Well, you knew about it.
You ain't gotta come make a statement. You just call me. You got my, you got my...
I need the workers. I'm talking about, I can't hunt you down?
I li, I'm at City Hall.
Okay, alright. Now you remember what you just said. You at City Hall.
I'm at City Hall.